Hi Mike, hi Abby.
Oh Mayor.
We have all the. Well, still want me to go? I think we have all the city council, do we not? Think we do. Okay, it's seven thirty. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Milton Common Council for March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to order. And the first item is the role of Mike Laurie.
I'll take it. Counsel President Olson.
Present.
Burke.
Present.
Nelson. Nelson. Kuhn.
Here.
Fussard.
Present.
West.
Present.
Ramsey.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
And Kuhn. Emily, are you there?
Katie.
Oh, no, Katie Nelson.
Here.
She, she already said she was here. I was asking if Emily had joined. Oh, Emily.
She was here.
It looks like she's frozen, but she's on the screen.
Yep, all present.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So the next item is the public comments has limited to three minutes. Identify yourself and Mike is going to, Mike will keep track of the time. Please raise your hand. And I can see the Kuhn for long has raised his hand. Can you have three minutes? Please identify yourself and, and then, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Um, hopefully so. So, um, yes, um, look, I know some of the council members here will have already heard my comments, um, at least twice, if not more, but I would like to just bring some statistics to the attention of the full council. So, um, what we have here is an ordinance which is being pushed forward on the basis of two complaints um, over the last year. Um, here in Middleton, we've got twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven residents, according to the last census. There's ten thousand five hundred and nine housing units. So the fact that there's two dwellings complaining about chickens, that's less than zero point two percent of, um, the, the units here, the dwellings in Middleton. Um, so I think, uh, and this is an ordinance meanwhile that affects all twenty-two thousand or so of the residents here, um, including myself and my family, where the ordinance as written would pretty much preclude us from our ability to have our backyard chickens. Uh, the number of complaints, as I mentioned, is very small, just two. And it's been acknowledged in the license and ordinance prior meetings that, uh, there are hundreds, that the complaints about dogs, for example, is hundreds of times more than, uh, chicken owners. So I would like to ask why chicken owners are being singled out. I would also like to make the council aware that at the last, uh, LNO meeting, um, earlier this month, there were twelve public comments against the proposed ordinance and none for it. At the prior meeting where it was, uh, discussed in the public comment in November, which I attended, there was three public comments against the ordinance and none for it. I believe you go back to the October meeting where it was first raised, there was two of the, uh, the complainants were present, but again, were outnumbered by, uh, those against the ordinance. Um, you know, again, the ordinance purports to be, um, for the keeping of chickens, yet it really is about eliminating the possibility for many residents here in the city of Middleton to do so. Uh, there's little talk, or has been little talk about the reasons that we keep chickens here in our house. It's so that we can teach our children where food comes from, so we can pursue a sustainable lifestyle, turning food waste into eggs and chicken litter into compost and thus again, fresh vegetables. And also just for the sheer joy our children and our neighbors also, I will mention, get from our chickens. Um, so with that, I would say that I, I don't see the necessity of this ordinance. I think it's heavy-handed uh, and unnecessary, and I would like to see the council, um, not bring this forward. Thank you. And, uh, sorry, Kiran Forlong, nineteen twelve Middleton Street. I forgot to open up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiran. Next one is Tyler Emrick. Tyler, go ahead, please.
Thank you, uh, Tyler Emrick, seventy-three twenty Elmwood Avenue. Uh, echo some of the same things Kiran mentioned. I don't support the chicken keeping ordinance as drafted. And I'm disappointed that we're here again, uh, discussing an overbearing and overreaching, uh, ordinance that dives into tiki-tacky items that in no way could solve any sort of conceived problem and do nothing but add excessive red tape and unnecessary language into our city code. Uh, as Kiran mentioned, uh, it has been stated at LNO meetings that over three hundred calls per year go out to the police regarding dogs. Uh, yet in these same meetings, it's been mentioned that there's been two complaints in the past year regarding chickens, three complaints as far as anybody can remember in the past several years. Uh, so again, uh, the ordinance for dogs is about three paragraphs long in the city code, while this draft chicken ordinance is five pages long. The disparity there should be the first hint that this ordinance is excessive. Uh, it's filled with items that in no way should be legislated by the city. Uh, my favorite example of this, uh, would be item four G in the proposed, uh, ordinance, where it spells out that my chickens, quote, "shall have access to a source of fresh water at all times that will, that will remain unfrozen during the winter months," end quote. Let me be clear, I always provide fresh water to my chickens. I think it's the right thing to do and it is important. I'm not speaking out against providing water to chickens. I am speaking out against a city spending time and resources legislating things that are not a problem. Unless there's been a rash of calls to police on reports of flocks of dehydrated chickens roaming the streets of Middleton, causing trouble as they search for fresh water that their keepers are withholding from them. Unless that's happening, this shouldn't be in an ordinance. And I would argue if this is the stuff that's filling up this draft ordinance, the whole ordinance probably isn't needed. This is but one example of lots of lines in this ordinance that's excessive, overbearing, uh, and condescending frankly. That does nothing but add extra lines of code into the city legislative body that has, uh, no value and doesn't solve any sort of problem. As a chicken keeper, but more importantly, as a citizen, supporting good government, I oppose this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Tyler. Alexander is the next one.
Can I go in just a minute?
Uh, okay, so, okay, all right, so you can wait three minutes and next one is Marnie Ginsburg and then your turn. Marnie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, hi, my name is Marnie Ginsburg and we live at seven-one-zero-one Franklin Avenue in Middleton. And, um, we have lived in Middleton for, um, ten years and we've been a chicken keeper for about eight of those. We started, um, that was one of our main things before we moved into Middleton was, um, to check whether we were allowed to have chickens because that's something we really wanted to do when we bought our first home. And, um, we're very happy, um, to be in Middleton and, um, our flock, we have six chickens right now. And, um, they are, um, our pets and, um, so we, okay, so, um, it's important for our kids to be a part of raising, um, the chickens with us. They learn about the sense of responsibility for caring for something. They also learn about, um, the whole life cycle of a chicken. They got to raise them from chicks, which was a really neat experience. Um, and then they were able to, um, sorry, kids in the background, um. So, yeah, they were able to, um, raise the chickens with us and then they are able to help us with the composting and, um, then see that we use that to, um, grow vegetables in our garden and then we're able to, um, use the, um, scraps from our kitchen and recycle them as well. And our kids learn a sense of responsibility. Um, sorry, the kid just walked in the door. Um, so also it's been a great opportunity for us to create a sense of community. Um, we've met a number of our neighbors through raising chickens. Either, um, they were raising chickens and we were able to, um, get to know them and learn about raising chickens from them or we were able to, um, meet our other neighbors and they were excited and we've shared eggs with them. And so all of our neighbors are very supportive of our chickens, which has been a really great way, um, to build community. Um, so we raise chickens because of the sustainability and, um, the, just making us good citizens as well. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. The next one is. Cl- Cladinsky. Alexander.
Thank you. Thank you so much for letting me speak. Um, my name is Alexander Cladinsky. I live at seven-one-zero-one Franklin Avenue. And, um, me and my wife and kids have been raising chickens for over ten years and we urge the council to vote against this ordinance. We really enjoy raising chickens. I spend a lot of time, sometimes just me and my son, for example, will go out into the backyard and just watch the chickens and it's fun. We currently have six chickens. And, uh, I like having six chickens. This ordinance would make it so we could only have four chickens. Um, and it just seems overbearing. You know, when I look at the dog ordinance or the cat ordinance, those are much smaller. They're more about making sure that your dogs and cats aren't roaming the streets. Um, and I think that there's just nothing like going to the backyard and getting in some eggs to bring home. And I worry that with this ordinance being so restrictive that slowly new people wouldn't start raising chickens and it wouldn't be something, um, that continues here. And, um, I remember there was some times when some kids were passing by with their parents and they knocked on our door and said, hey, do you guys have chickens? Oh my goodness, can our kids come see them? So it's just provided so much wonderful community. I mean, I feel like a number of people that we're now close with in the community, we met through chickens. Uh, there's a good neighbor that we, before we got chickens, we knocked on their door and said, hey, we see you have chickens. We think of getting chicken, we're thinking about getting chickens and it was just wonderful. And so I, I'm not sure that I see where the need for this ordinance is coming from. Um, if, if there's a neighborly dispute, hopefully there's a different way to resolve it than through an ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Alexander. Next one is Alan. Koskalin.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, my name is Alan Koskalin. I live at seventy-two eleven Elmwood Avenue. I'm here to also express my, uh, support for residents continuing to keep chickens and my opposition to this ordinance that's being brought forward today. At multiple committee meetings, residents demonstrated overwhelming support for chicken keeping as it brings value to our children, our neighborhoods, our community and the environment. I previously spoke to this council regarding the benefits of keeping chickens as I saw them. In the, the committee meetings, we also discussed numerous problems with the ordinance and like the ones that are being brought forth tonight. And there's far too many for me to list, but I'll give an example of, uh, in unintended consequence that something like this could have. An ordinance like this would affect zoning and land use, such as the ability to have both an accessory dwelling unit and a chicken coop in close proximity. So as our city works to increase housing density, we can't let an ordinance like this undermine our broader values. Like to point out that this, that this ordinance comes here without recommendation from the committee and it's not just because of an inability to find common ground, but the, the process itself brought to light a fundamental problem with the premise of the ordinance, which was that we need to prosecute chicken owners. If we're committed to sustainability and if we value our proximity to local and organic food production, if we were to be leaders, we can't just look to a spreadsheet of what others are doing. We must look to our community values and use those to guide us in making the right choices. This ordinance should be tabled. If there's anything to work out on the topic, it should go to zoning. And I propose we start with a proclamation or a resolution supporting or even encouraging residential chicken keeping in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next one is Hans Helbert.
Thank you, Mayor Brier and council members. Um, I'm speaking against regulating the keeping of chickens, especially in the form of requiring a license rather than through land use and zoning. And I think we've all heard somebody say, there ought to be a law and then fill in that they don't like something and there should be regulations against it and in order for that statement to be said, they often have something that they don't like exist. And I think laws are great ways of preventing problems in the future, but they certainly aren't very good at fixing problems that already exist for various reasons. The city attorney stated that the proposed ordinance is being driven to deal with an existing problematic coop in the location of it. He also stated that there's alternative ways that the city can pursue to get that problematic coop relocated. Particularly, I think he was referring to under chapter seventeen nuisances. It's been said that it's a lot of work to enforce nuisances. Well, that could be true, but I think LNO's time and the council's time, if they want to, to work on ordinances would be best spent to, to reinforce the definition of what nuisances are and make it easier for an inspector to go out and determine whether a nuisance exists under that ordinance rather than to, uh, have to be so subjective. If you're gonna try to come up with standards for things like keeping chickens, I would encourage you not to rely on what other municipalities have done. Residents in other municipalities have had their chance to uh, work through the government process and provide input on what works for them in their communities. We have so many people commenting at license and ordinance committee that are already chicken keepers in Middleton and are saying that various things have worked without creating nuisances or problems in their neighborhood. But it doesn't make sense to create minimum standards that are more strict than, than what has already existed and worked. You need to listen to your constituents when forming these requirements. So I hope that the council finds that a new ordinance isn't necessary for dealing with a single or two nuisances that may exist. I hope that we could work through that with alternatives without having to require licenses for people to keep chickens. And I hope if you do find that chickens need to be regulated or their keepers need to be regulated, that you can do so through that zoning law rather than through the licensing process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hans. Uh, next one is Julie Winkelman.
Hi, Julie Winkelman, seven-zero-zero-nine Prairie Drive. Um, speaking against the chicken ordinance. Um, we have lived here in Middleton for four years, well, five. We came from the town of Middleton, specifically wanted to move to the city of Middleton for the urban feel, being close to community, access to public transportation and called the city of Middleton prior to moving, before buying our house, to see if we could keep chickens and what the laws were. Um, and we moved here because of the chicken laws, um, and the flexibility behind that. Um, I'm concerned that these, this is based on two complaints and it sounds like one of the complaints wasn't, was investigated and was not bound to be a nuisance. Um, hu- chicken hens keep, um, have a noise of about fifty decibels, which is about a human voice. Um, so are we gonna start regulating how children play outside? Are we gonna regulate chickens barking? Um, how are we responding to what a nuisance is? Certainly the police do not want to be called every time a dog barks. Um, and that is significantly louder. It's about ninety decibels, um, to a chicken. Um, and in general, chickens only make noise, um, a few times a day, usually when they lay an egg. Um, we've had no complaints about our chickens. One of our neighbors has requested our compost from our chickens because she likes that for her garden. Um, another one of our chick, or one of, one of our neighbors during the pandemic asked if we could give them eggs. Um, and so we've been giving them eggs during the summer when our chickens have excess. Um, I've found that it really has helped us work with our neighbors. And part of it also is me understanding that my neighbors live a different life than me. Um, some of my neighbors have kids that run around on their playground. Um, okay. Um, some of my neighbors have dogs that bark. Well, that's okay too. Um, and I'm really concerned that one or two people are driving an ordinance that affects a large portion of our city. And I feel like this gives merit to other people making complaints and requesting more ordinances to regulate more and more behavior. Um, I think that as, as adults, as a community, we're really responsible to talk with each other, to respect our neighbors, to find good common ground. And I think this ordinance really undermines, um, the goal of having open communication. Again, I think this can be done through the existing ordinance or more specific ordinances if we feel that nuisances are a problem. I mean, again, three hundred dog calls. Um, it seems like dogs are a problem. Um, so I'm not sure why we're talking about two complaints, one that's been investigated and has been not substantiated. Um, what do you have? Thanks.
Thanks, Julie. Next one is Harvey.
Hi there. I'm Harvey Woody and my wife Sandy and I live at seventy-one twenty-eight Hubbard Avenue. Oh, here we go. Seventy-one, uh, we are in support of the proposed chicken ordinance. We feel this is a common sense approach to the matter rather than the current willy-nilly non-approach. Much has already been said and written about this matter. Much has already been said and written about us in regards to this matter, some of which is quite negative, all by people who don't even know us. Judgments have been made by people who don't even know the circumstances. Here are the circumstances. Ten years ago, our backyard neighbor built his chicken coop which faces our backyard. It is directly behind his two-car garage and a few feet from our backyard fence. The garage acts as a sound barrier for the neighbor and at the same time, it acts as a sounding board at us. Couple that with a lean-to metal roof design in the coop, a ban shell effect is created, which means the sound is projected and amplified towards our house. With normal chicken noise, this would not be a problem, but this is not always the case. For whatever the reason, the chickens get into a heck of a loud commotion that will go on for five, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes or more several times a day. It doesn't seem like normal chicken behavior, but that is what's happening. When possible, we sleep with our second-story bedroom windows open. Some mornings we have been woken up by the chicken commotion. Even people walking by on our front sidewalk have commented, isn't that annoying? Damn right it is. When the chickens are quiet, they are very, very quiet for long stretches of time. When the chickens are loud, they are very, very loud. You never know when or how long. It's a chronic situation. It goes in spurts. We have been putting up with this for over eight years. We have an email exchange between us and our neighbors starting the summer of twenty-fourteen in which we explained our, expressed our concerns. Time doesn't allow me to go into details, but suffice it to say, the situation has not changed. Unsustainability sums it up for us. Again, this has been going on for eight-plus years. Last week at the LNO meeting, our neighbor said that we are unreasonable, intolerant aggressors. I can't help but wonder if the shoe was on the other foot, what would his reaction be? The written word comes from none other than Middleton's very own Big Bad Wolf down at the Middleton Review, who was constantly huffing and puffing about something. He referred to us as angry, vengeful neighbors. Speaking of angry and vengeful, if any of you have ever actually read any of his articles, you know it's a recurring underlying theme. His behavior is a classic example of the tail's never-ending quest to wag the dog. From my vantage point, the editor has no clothes. Once again, we are in favor of this ordinance. The city needs guidelines that allow citizens in similar situations some course of action. In closing, I'll leave you with a paraphrase quote from JFK. Ask now what your chickens can do for you. Ask what are your chickens doing to your neighbors? Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. So next one is Roger Schenk.
Hello, uh, I'm Roger Schenk. I live at sixty-four oh-nine Wydown Circle in Middleton. And I'm here to speak tonight regarding seventy-one oh-seven University Avenue. Um, should the council decide tonight to approve this project, I would respectfully request that, uh, you waive the second reading. And that's actually all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Next one is Chris Hunter. Chris?
Chris, you are muted.
Chris Hunter.
Yeah, I can't unmute it.
You're unmuted now.
Can you, oh, who can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had a bit of a back keeper problem. I am Chris Hunter Skeens of twenty-four thirty-five Branch Street. Um, I've long appreciated that many of Middleton's ordinances regarding nuisances require that neighbors in the plural must be affected by something in order for it to be charged as a nuisance, which means that one shouldn't have to fear one disgruntled neighbor making our lives miserable, which is a good thing and a good community value, not to say that someone who's having a problem is just a disgruntled neighbor. But this ordinance has been set in motion by two complaints about noise and odor caused by chickens or allegedly caused by chickens. And this is an attempt to create legislation targeted to those two situations that the neighbors aren't happy about. Um, in some situations, other things. Um in some situations, other things and chickens. Uh we are known that there's ordinances that cover noise and odor in the public nuisance section, and we've asked why those aren't being used here. And in the LNO meeting, we were told this nuisance ordinances don't work. And we're told that when a complaint gets filed, almost every time, by the time an officer or inspector gets there, the situation is no longer happening, and it's taking a lot of city time. I don't understand and want to raise the question, why is the response, we just have to try harder to catch them? Why isn't the response, we went and couldn't observe that, so we found them in compliance? Or why isn't the response, hi, I'm your alderman, uh let me sit down with you, your neighbors, and negotiate this? So this chicken ordinance is being put forth as a means to create a new way to apply public nuisance ordinances to a targeted community of chicken owners. And it has a lot along with it. It makes owning chickens more expensive. It doesn't say how taxpayer money is going to be raised for permitting an inspection. And I question how much faith that this actually will solve the problem, because there's a line in there that states even if you're in full compliance, you can still be charged under noise and odor ordinances. So if it were effective, why would that, why does that line need to be there? So I don't believe it will solve the problems that have arisen. Chicken owners are trying really hard to be heard. We've attempted to edit. We met with Jim and Kathy for four hours and changed many, you know, misguided or incorrect or punitive sections. And then in this new third revision of the law, many of those things are back in there. Uh they removed the very definition of a hen and a rooster, plus a statement requiring the humane that uh killing of chickens must be done humanely when it must be done, which uh makes me very sad. So if the city has to work so hard to document a problem and spend so much time of officers and inspections to chase down a complaint, I just question, that's, why is more of that the answer? Um perhaps it needs to be solved by negotiating between neighbors. I don't believe it merits the harming the enjoyment of backyard chickens for the whole rest of the city. And I'm asking you to vote no, but to refer for the most useful thing about this, the twenty-five-foot setback from neighbor dwellings to zoning, because that is one thing that could help these situations. And I just want to remind you, the chickens are not velociraptors. They're really quite nice. And thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next one is Edgar Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Edgar Spalding, Kerry Irving, not, excuse me, live at seventy-four seventeen South Avenue. We've kept chickens for at least twelve years. We've never had a single complaint. Um our uh neighbors, in fact, enjoy our chickens. Um and I have to, I can tell you that this proposed ordinance, which we oppose, um has has caused a great deal of upset. It's caused a great deal of upset across the city. It's caused more upset than any chicken has ever caused. And um uh that's because the uh the ordinance impinges on on a, on a activity and a hobby and a lifestyle that is popular and is um and is sustainable and is completely consistent with what the city uh purports to support. In fact, I I uh please, please read your own mission statement. And um um much has been said about what other communities are doing. I urge you to um view that a different way. It is, nobody has checked to see if the other communities, as far as I know, uh has checked to see if the other communities regret what they have on the books. Uh nobody is asked to see if those ordinances have helped those other communities in any way. I expect if you ask those people, they would say either they don't work or they don't use them, or they'll say, we wish we hadn't put them there. I think it's very possible, but as far as I know, people have made lists, but they've never asked to see if they're effective. Since I've been raising chickens a long time uh and know how they enrich our community, I really doubt that those, that it plays out any differently in the other communities. There is no need for this ordinance. If you started from scratch and said, let's survey the city and see, okay, we have two complaints. That by definition is is what is a non-problem. So the data that we have right now is evidence that you don't need an ordinance. You could hardly have stronger evidence indicating you don't need one.
Thank you, Edgar. Next one is Janine Bindel.
Hi. Um I want to say first, thank you to the common council and mayor for for taking our comments. Uh my name is Janine Bindel. I live at seven-three-zero-two Elmwood Avenue. Um and I would like to voice my opposition to the chicken ordinance, both as it is written and in concept. Uh many others on the call have offered thoughts that I agree with. Um and for my part, I would like to focus on two things. First, the emotional aspect of chicken ownership. Um our family specifically cares for eight chickens, each of which is named and has a personality. Um we have two children who care for the chickens, carry them around and interact with them, like some may a cat or a dog. And I ask that you consider regulations around chicken ownership. I ask that as you consider regulations around chicken ownership, that you apply an equitable lens to all pet ownership and consider the number of complaints around chickens that the city has on file versus those that they have against dogs. And whether or not the approach being taken here is personally motivated, or if it is truly in the best interest of all Middleton residents. Secondly, I would like to share a little bit of information that I've gathered from Middleton residents. Um as a constituent in this process, it has come to my attention that no residents, aside from the two specific complaints, were consulted for input in the creation of this ordinance. And um as others have stated, one residence have been involved in the editing editing of the ordinance. Their work has been removed from the working document before the ordinance has been presented to the LNO committee. Um so as a result, I put together a survey to solicit input from Middleton residents on their perspective um on chicken ownership. I received feedback from all districts but four, District Four and District Eight. More than thirty percent of the feedback was from residents who did not own chickens themselves, but have neighbors who did. One hundred percent of people who responded said they opposed the chicken ordinance as written. Um this data is clearly not comprehensive because we're here because of two specific complaints. Um but uh I do think that um these two situations can be managed with other tools that the city already has, specifically the nuisance ordinance. Um and I would like to encourage the council to not move forward with the chicken ordinance as presented. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Janine. Next one is Charles Myers. Charles?
Good evening. My name is Charles Myers. I reside at seven thousand seven Century Avenue, Middleton, Wisconsin. And I must admit that I am walking on eggshells tonight. And I speak exclusively for myself and not for any organizations or workplaces that I am affiliated with. I do not own or want to own chickens. However, I see that on tonight's city council agenda, we have an extreme ordinance proposed that would restrict the ownership of chickens. Someone apparently feels that chicken owners have flown the coop and must be brought back to the roots. There isn't a clear need for this ordinance, though. Chicken nuisance is already regulated under Chapter Seventeen, Section Four J of Middleton's ordinances. In that is the event that the birds are actually a nuisance. With only two ordinance violations in as long as anyone can remember, I think it's fair to say that complaints against chicken owners have been rare as hen's teeth. The proposed ordinance seems to be someone winging it and forcing a group of law-abiding Middletonians who aren't bothering anyone to work around the cluck to protect their pets. I know I'm laying it on a bit chick here, but instead of focusing on affordable housing, workforce housing, public transportation, the community campus, sustainability, the eighty to one hundred decibel semi-trucks that drive through the downtown, or even that thing that begins with an A uh that I won't name, a little, a little over a mile due west of where I live. Folks have wasted how much time from community members, city staff, and others for restrictive ordinance meant to solve a problem already addressed by what we have on the books. I hope that so far in this comment, I haven't laid an egg. But searching for a problem to solve and ignoring public input would be clucking nuts. And I hope that the excellent people of city council set a good example and vote this proposal down.
Thank you, Charles. Next one is Dominic.
Hi, uh thank you for the opportunity and thank you all for your work on behalf of the city. Um I'm Dominic Bindel. I live at seventy-three oh two Elmwood Avenue. Um and like many others, tonight I would encourage you to vote against adopting the proposed ordinance to permit keeping of chickens. Following the first draft of this ordinance, like many of the chicken keepers in Middleton, I've sought to understand why such an ordinance is needed, what problems it's aiming to solve, and what problems it would indirectly create. I've spent myself well over a dozen hours in conversation with city staff, city older persons, and chicken keepers. In some, I've learned the following. I've learned that over the past three years, there have been exactly three chicken coops or flocks elevated to the attention of the city. The first issue was accompanied by a formal complaint and was promptly resolved when the originator of that complaint relocated for unspecified reasons. The second issue has never manifest in a formal complaint, but it has rather come to the attention of older people through personal relationships. A third issue has resulted in a formal complaint, a citation, and appears to be the sole motivating force for this ordinance. I've learned that there are dozens of coops in the city. While I do not personally know every single chicken owner in the city, every single coop or flock that I'm aware of is affected by this draft of the ordinance, one hundred percent chicken keeper impact rate. I've learned that the primary coop motivating this ordinance is in the middle of a complex and historical neighbor dispute involving various invasions of privacy and hostilities. I've also learned that city staff does not believe that the draft ordinance you see before you will ultimately resolve the conflict at the root of the only issue it was designed to address. Enforcement of this ordinance will demand a significant contribution of time and energy from city staff, all to address a problem it cannot solve. Enforcement of this ordinance will require dozens of chicken keepers to move coops which are structurally bound to the earth and contain buried wire lath and/or eliminate pets from their flocks. I've learned that the motivation for this ordinance is to address concerns extending from noise and smell, the noise and smell of chickens as distinct from the noises and smells related to backyard composting, dogs, garbage bins, snow blowers, or raucous teenagers. Despite this learning, however, it remains unclear to me how this ordinance proposes to be more effective than existing provisions in Chapter Sixteen, Section Two C, which states in part, no person shall keep or allow to be kept any animal or bird which shall habitually by any noise tend to unreasonably disturb the peace and quiet of any person in the vicinity thereof, or Chapter Seventeen, Section Two B, which states in part the um that no extremit of animals, birds, or fowl which are are buried or otherwise disposed of in the sanitary manner within twenty-four hours shall be allowed. This ordinance will not solve the problems it's drafted to address. It's going to cost the city money and time, and it's going to cause an undue burden on chicken keepers across the whole city. I'd encourage you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Is there anyone else who may want to speak? Either raise your hands or if you are on a telephone, try to, you can start to speak. Mike, I don't see any raised hands, do you?
I don't either, man.
Is there anyone else want to speak on the, is on the telephone? I don't see that either.
Hi, my name is Debbie Gaffney Dilly, and I would like to have a chance to speak.
Go ahead, Debbie.
Hi, my name is Debbie Gaffney Dilly. I live at five-four-zero-five John Paul Court in Middleton, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak against the ordinance. I've been a backyard chicken keeper for a little over ten years, and what I did prior to um getting the chickens, I um checked with all of my neighbors around me to let them know that I was getting backyard chickens, and I wanted their input with that, of which I had wholeheartedly got their approval for it. I've had an open backyard that I, my neighbors have come in, they've brought their children, they've brought their grandchildren. I've used it as a teaching moment in that to uh instruct them on chickens and coops. I've shared eggs. I've also employed some of the children in the neighborhood in there to take care of my chickens when I've been out of town. As far as this ordinance goes, I feel that it is extreme in how it's been written. It's been overreaching. I encourage the council to vote no to this ordinance. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Debbie. Really appreciate it. Uh is there anyone else who may want to speak at this time? If you're on the telephone, you may start speaking now. Or if you are, raise your hand or make yourself aware that you want to speak. Is there anyone else who may want to speak at this time? Okay, I don't see any raised hands or anyone want to speak, so I'm going to close that part of the meeting, and we are going to go to the proclamations. So today is a wonderful day. We are going to honor two of the Girl Scouts. So I'm going to read the first part will be the same for both the girls and the, for the second one, I will read, read the their project, which we'll be doing. Proclamation celebrating Anastasia Leffol of Middleton and her earning of the Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve. And Bruce, it's Bruce's holder has completed a project that has a measurable and sustainable impact on our community. And whereas a gold award Girl Scout tackles an issue that's dear to her by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas the gold award is the mark or the truly remarkable proof that not only girls make a difference, but they are already have. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award serves as the key to open doors to scholarships, preferred admission tracks for college, and amazing career opportunities. And whereas Anastasia Leffol, a member of Girl Scout Group eleven oh nine, has completed the Girl Scout Gold Award Save the Nato Bees. Anastasia describes her project as, my gold award addressed the declining population of Nato bees in Wisconsin and the lack of education surrounding those Nato bees. To do this, I created Nato bee habitat through solitary bee boxes at Henry Valer Zoo. I also gave countless presentations to zoo guests about Nato bees, pollinators around the world, and what individuals can do to help. I also taught some zoo staff and volunteers about solitary bee boxes, created an instruction binder for my box's maintenance, designed educational signage, and created educational pollinator fact sheet for future usage by zoo. Now therefore, I could be proud mayor of the city of Milton, along with common council of Milton, hereby applaud and space dial level for her efforts and achievement. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on the fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two, with a motion to approve.
This is Katie's approval. Sorry, Robert.
That's fine. This is Alder Burke. I will second Katie's motion.
Yeah, motion by Katie and second by Elder Burke. Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that Anastasia is on on uh screen with us too, as is Claire McLoughlin.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Let's, Anastasia, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is wonderful. I love your project, and it's it's amazing what you have done. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next one is proclamation for Claire McLennan of Milton and her earning of the Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas the Girl Scout Award is the highest award a Girl Scout can keep and Bruce, its holder has completed a project that has a measurable and sustainable impact on our community. And whereas the gold award Girl Scout tackles an issue that's dear to And whereas the gold award Girl Scout tackles an issue that's dear to her by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas the gold award is the mark of the truly remarkable proof that not only can girls make a difference, but that they already have. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award serves as a key to open doors to scholarships, preferred admissions track for college, and amazing career opportunity. And whereas this is clear project. Claire McLennan, a member of Girl Scout Group eleven oh nine, has completed the Girl Scout Gold Award. Middle School Mental Health Editions, that was her project. Claire describes her project as I made piece of curriculum for sixth graders at the middle schools in my district. It includes information about mental health, what mental health is, what are mental health disorders, some example and strategy on how to manage that. There is an online resource sheet for sixth graders to learn more from and a pamphlet that they will be able to bring home to discuss with their parents. The goal of this project was to help increase knowledge about mental health at a younger age, decrease stigma, and give kids a way to get help sooner. A great project and timely and was needed. Now therefore, I could be brought mayor of the city of Milton along with the common council of Milton hereby applaud Claire McLennan for her efforts and achievement. This proclaim, proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on the fifteenth day of March twenty twenty-two, need a motion to approve.
This is Emily. I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Elder Emily Kuhn, I need a second.
I'll second.
Second, Katie, Elder Katie Nelson. Okay, although there are a favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So motion passed unanimously. Congratulations, Claire, and thank you for doing this wonderful job. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, now we are on to the next item, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve.
This is Alder Robert Burke. I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Need a second.
This is just a second.
Motion by Elder Bart Burke and second by Elder Ramsey. And the consent agenda has common council, co, common council minutes, audit of the bills, and application to mend the offices for the old beverage license held by Costco. All those in favor of the motion for the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We are on to the old business, Mike, so this is the pandemic response discussion and direction from council.
Alright, so per council direction, we do have it on the agenda again this week. You know, there, there might be questions concerning the emergency declaration that's in place. Uh, I believe the county's emergency declaration is still in place, as is the city's. And um I just read uh in the newspaper today that there's a new variant in northeastern China now for us to pay attention to. Um, if it's given same track record as in the past, it probably will be or already is in the United States at this point. Um, I don't know much about it, other than that, uh in terms of um health of our employees, it's, it's been uh pretty good. I, I don't know of too many problems from a uh COVID standpoint. We still don't anticipate that our hybrid technology will be available for in-person meetings until the summer. June, July is what Drew Montour, our IT manager, has advised. So any questions or discussion, feel free.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike or anybody wants to, okay, Luke, well, Elder Ramsey and then Elder Luke Puzard. Elder Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um Larry, has Larry been able to get us the questions we asked about um physical quorum and um the emergency declaration at the, at our last meeting, we had a few questions?
Yes, unfortunately, I was on vacation, and so I have not completed that yet.
And by the way, Larry loves his vacations, so. Okay, so.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna make the, the, the same statement I'm, I made last time. I think that it's important that we could get back to in-person meetings. I think we have an obligation to get back to in-person meetings. I don't think that we can use with everybody going back to school and going back to work. I don't think we can use as a council an emergency declaration as an excuse not to come back in person.
Thank you, Elder Ramsey. So the next one is Elder Luke Puzard.
Yes, thank you. Question, Mike, are city employees required to be in the office at any point uh over the course of the week?
Well, we've been allowing employees to stagger their times and work remotely, so uh it's fairly decentralized by department, adjusting to the needs of each department. But I'm satisfied that we always have coverage in our offices.
My, my, only, the, the reason why I ask is, is if we are going to ask that these, the people who work to ensure that this city um continues to work for us, um I think, and, and we're gonna ask them to at least spend part of the time in their office in the building that we can follow suit and do the same as a council. Uh perhaps it is a sense of not every meeting, uh but maybe every other or therein. Um, I just think it, it would be good, um it show good faith that if we are going to ask something of one group of individuals that we would be willing to do the same ourselves.
Okay, thank you, Elder Luke Puzard. Next one is Elder West.
I would like to, I vaguely remember, or I know I remember asking that we should follow what the county board is doing in terms of holding hybrid meetings or online meetings. And I know certainly on the Lakes and Watershed Commission, which is a county uh board or a county committee, we are still online with concerns for members of the committee, but more importantly, I think we need to be concerned in terms of protecting citizens. And there is a new variant coming that's around. I think it's actually here in this country already. But we do not know the health status of people that are that need to attend the meeting to express their opinions like they did tonight. And if any of those have various health issues, we are putting them at risk, especially if they have to sit here for quite a long time in a not well-ventilated room. Um, that's where my concern is. People with cancer, transplants, heart disease, elderly, there's a long list of people that are at risk. So I do not want to put anyone at risk. That's my feeling on it.
Thank you, Susan. Next one is Elder Kathy Olson.
Yeah, my, my um question is, okay, we're waiting for the hybrid equipment to arrive, but I don't think that is exactly what an emergency is. We had the meetings prior to COVID, and we were able to do um call-ins and we, we, when we had like the airport master uh planning meeting, we were able to have people zoom into it. It would be clunky, but I don't think that not having the equipment is the emergency part of the equation. Thank you.
Thank you, Elder Olson. Next one is Elder Emily Kuhn.
Thanks so much. I, I wanna say that I agree with Dan. Uh, last time I talked about my children going back to school, um and that I was looking forward. I did talk about the new technology, but I agree with, with Luke. If we're asking our staff uh to go ahead and come in, then I think we can do the same. And Kathy also brings up a reasonable um point, which is, we did it before with this tech, it's imperfect, but it's doable. So um just wanna say thank you to Dan for continuing to bring it up because we do serve the American public.
I would just like to note that the topic on the agenda is pandemic response discussion and direction from council. So if the council wants to provide direction by a vote, rather than just a discussion, you are enabled to do that under this agenda item.
Okay, Luke, Elder Puzard?
I would like, then like to make a motion.
Okay.
Unless, unless Kathy, did you have further discussion that you wanted to add to this?
My only question was, the part that I, I would really like to have is, um Larry, if the, what the quorum has to look like, if it has to be a physical quorum or if it could be made up of people calling in, and we don't have that answer yet, so. But go ahead. Right. Go ahead, Luke.
Okay, Elder Puzard, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion then that we move towards every other uh council meeting being in person, either, let's just say that for the first, the first meeting of the month be in person and then all the, and then subsequent meetings, either the, the third week or the fifth week on occasion be virtual.
Okay, need a second? Need a second?
This is Emily. I will second it, especially for conversation.
Okay, motion by Elder Puzard, second by Elder Emily Kuhn.
I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to propose a substitute motion.
Okay, go ahead.
My, my substitute motion, um because I think if we're gonna do this, we should do this, my substitute motion would be that we move to go back in person with the first meeting starting in April. So that would be April fifth.
Right.
That would be my motion.
Okay, need a second?
I will second that for discussion too.
Okay, any further discussion? Now, just to let you know, on April fifth, I would not, I will be in California. I didn't know about this at the time, but that's nowadays, so. And Elder Kathy Nelson, but I can participate by Zoom, not a problem, so. Um.
Yeah, so um my question is about committee meetings. Um, can we continue to uh attend committee meetings via Zoom?
My motion at this time is strictly for the finance and council meeting.
Thank you.
And Luke, and Kathy, is that your understanding too?
Right.
Okay, alright, hmm. Okay, so the next one is Luke Puzard?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm done, I'm done. I'll take my hand down. Right.
Okay. Um, Bill Burns and then Susan, Elder West.
Mayor, just wanted to respond to your comment that on, on April fifth, if, if there is a move to in-person that you'd be able to participate in Zoom. Uh, I think that you would be able to observe the meeting. I don't know how effectively you'd be able to participate in the discussion or lead the meeting without the hybrid technology in place.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Uh, Elder West and then Elder Sullivan.
Okay, so my question is, if we are meeting in person, does that mean the meeting is not a hybrid meeting since we don't have the technology? So everyone, including the citizens, will have to be present?
Yes, well, again, my understanding is that because of the audio issues and without having the technology in place, in order for people to be sure that they would be able to be heard by those present um and those observing the meeting, uh likely would have to be present. I, I know when we had tried previously without the technology in place, there were a lot of audio issues, so I, I think it effectively means to fully participate in the meeting, you would likely have to be present.
So I would like to ask then for citizens that want to present comments, that they be allowed to send in written comments and we read them. I don't like the idea of having to force someone that has a health issue and doesn't feel comfortable sitting here to come in and potentially risk getting infected. And are we going to be requiring ma, wearing of mask?
Okay. Um, does anybody want to answer that? Larry or Mike or Bill or anybody?
Policy that is in place is that we strongly encourage the wearing of masks, but we don't mandate it.
Okay.
Okay, but what about for citizens that want to speak but don't want, feel comfortable coming in? Does that mean they have to risk their health or not be able to be heard?
They're always welcome to send email or write, so we could read them. I don't think that would be an issue, so.
Is, but that needs to be a clearly stated policy and put in our actual agenda so they know they can do that.
Larry, do we need that as a policy in the agenda? Larry Beckler?
Um, I think that if, if the council wants to disseminate that broadly, um it would be appropriate if the council, in the council's discretion to do that. Um, certainly, we required that in the pre-COVID times, and um I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that there may not be enough time to widely disseminate that information to members of the public that want to speak. But subject to that, uh the council has the ability to decide its own meeting rules. So um I think that that would be permissible, if that's what the council wants.
Okay. Well, okay, so we can discuss that uh after this motion, so is that okay with you, Elder West?
I guess so. I just want to be sure everybody can be included and feel comfortable and not at risk of catching something.
Sure, I think we all have the same concern, so. Okay, Elder Mark Sullivan?
Um, Dan, I, I would ask that if you were gonna make the motion that you did, that you include personnel since it's scheduled for the same night as finance and full council.
Yep, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, so is that okay with the who seconded that? I imagine so.
I did, I'm sorry. I, I seconded. Yes, that's absolutely fine.
Alright. Okay, Elder Kathy Olson?
Um, yeah, we've always had the ability to call in. There was always a phone number included even prior to COVID where people call into the, the meeting, but I still keep going back to when we had the airport master planning committee of the whole meeting, and we were able to all be there, and we had a Zoom call going on at the same time. I think Mike was in his office trying, he did some things. And it wasn't, it wasn't great, it wasn't awful, it was, we were able to do it. And Gudip, I think you might, might have been called in on that too.
Yep, yep, I have, so.
And it, it seemed to be okay. I mean, I don't think we have to throw away the Zoom. I think somehow it's not gonna be perfect, of course, but it's um, and you don't want, want it to not work when you need it to work at the, at the wrong moment, but um I, I think we've always had the ability to call in, and I, I I don't think that we have to rely on people writing their comments ahead of time.
So Bill or whoever is in technology, so we could have Zoom, um even though it may not be the best possible quality. Um, at least starting with the, the first meeting in April, I would have liked the second if I would have known that we are going to go to in-person meeting. I may have changed the arrangement, but that's how it is now, so. So we would have the technology, Bill or Drew or whoever or, you know, the person or Jeremy be able to handle these meetings. Be able to handle these meetings. Jeremy, maybe you will have more to say? Yeah, before we. Before we're going to work your, yes, mm-hmm. So that should work. Okay, well, if there are problems, there are always solutions, so we can always work on that, so. Okay, any further questions or comments?
I just a question for Dan who made the motion. Yeah, uh, do you want that to apply to city staff as well?
Um. I think that if we are, if there is the thought that we're gonna have the issues that um. Potentially, I think that whoever, I think that the city staff that is um. That is not running the meeting. Um, and we just are asking for opinion, they can, they can probably call in and we can have, like when we asked Sean for an opinion. Um, that he wouldn't necessarily have to be in person, but I I, yeah, I think it's gonna. For whoever's running the meeting, they're probably gonna have to be in person.
So uh, when what we were referring back to when we first started during the pandemic. Um, I operated the Zoom. From my office and we tried to work out the uh the sound. In the room itself with Jeremy uh taking the video. Um. So I would be in the building, I'm just a few feet away, but um. To run the Zoom now, it's possible somebody else could run the Zoom. And I could be in person within the uh the council chambers.
Okay, Kathy, Alder Olson?
Yeah, could we all bring our iPads with us in case some something happened and we weren't able to? And then we could just revert to Zoom, but we would be in the in the um council chambers? We all have iPads now, so.
Well, I'm sure we can, so I don't think that should be an issue.
Would that be help uh helpful? Would that help us if something? Didn't work right? Probably a lot of food, Jeremy?
I don't think Bill and I have the technical expertise to help with that question.
Okay.
I don't know if Jeremy does either.
Okay. Right. Okay.
That's why we had uh. That's why we had two microphones. One, remember, we were passing around for the council. Uh, which takes some time and then the other one for members of the audience for a public comment.
That's right, I remember that now, yeah.
It's the fog of COVID after the last two years.
Okay, how how about, how how about this? How about to, in order to give you more time, I my motion is still on the table, but I'll change the date from April 5th. To April 19th, which would be the start of the uh, the new terms. So that'll give you, you have one, two, three, four weeks. To work on the technical side of things.
Actually, five weeks.
I I think that's a uh, I think that's um a a very reasonable timeline.
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, so then everybody's happy with that? Any other part? Oh, Elder Burke?
Yeah, um. I guess. I would just point out. This is why hybrid is a problem until there's a good system in place. I think the original motion, and I don't care if you choose April 5th or April 19th. The original motion is. To come back into in-person meetings. And I think that has to really, we have to know what we're voting for here. That's what this is. The hybrid thing is going to be a nightmare. And maybe something can be cobbled together prior to us having a an actual system in place. But I think. We have to treat this as we're. In person, having the meeting in person, inviting. Inviting our constituents and residents of Middleton to come live to the meeting or send. Uh, their concerns to us prior to the meeting. And then dealing with it as an in-person meeting, because I think this hybrid thing is going to be problematic. And while we can. Try to make it a little hybrid, I would basically plan on this being an in-person meeting only.
You're absolutely right.
If you wanted to throw that till May 3rd, Robert?
What's that? I I'm. I'm fine with whatever date the. Council who's planning on being here for more than two months. Uh, whatever they choose to do, I will abide by it.
That was a good one, Elder Sullivan. Does anybody else have any question or comments? Otherwise, uh, all those in favor of the motion to start the city council, finance committee and personal. Committee meetings starting on April 19th, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Oh, okay, seven one. Okay, we are on to the. Mike, do you need any further input or that's good enough?
I think that gives us the direction.
Okay. Next one is agreement, city administrator employment agreement. And uh. I will just say a few words that uh after well over twenty-three years. Our distinguished uh. City administrator is uh, well, still planning to retire. And uh, the selection committee have uh gone through the process of uh. Uh, hiring a replacement and the selection committee went through a long process and. We have found a great candidate with the. As you will find out very soon or you already have, and he has uh. Accepted the offer. That's Brian Gaddo now, the city administrator of Manona City. Or City of Manona. Does anybody else want to say anything, Elder Burke or uh? Uh, Elder Sullivan? Emily Cool, Elder Kathy Olson? And. Or anyone else, I'm gonna start with Elder Burke and then uh then with Susan West and then Elder Sullivan. Elder Burke?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I I I would, like you said, uh, Gurdip, I would like to. Really thank uh Mike Davis for. His guidance over many, many years. I know I have benefited from his insight and um. Just talking me through various issues when I had questions. I really, really appreciate everything you've done, so thank you so much. You're not done yet. We're gonna keep you around for another. Month and a half here and and uh maybe two months, I guess. And um, really looking forward to that. And then I also. Uh, uh, very much wanna welcome Brian Gaddow. Um, it was, it was a pleasure to meet you and I look forward to working with you more fully here in the future.
And he is on the call, by the way.
Yeah. Excellent.
There he is.
It's not too late, Brian.
Yeah, well, I want to be the, well, congratulations, Brian. So other, next one is Elder Susan West?
I want to thank Mike. I've worked with him for a long time and I've really appreciated everything he has done. I hope he will somehow manage to continue to participate a little bit in city government. I mean, at least to come watch us maybe occasionally. You only live right behind city halls, so it's not a hard trip for you to get here.
Mike, does the house come with the job?
Pardon me?
Does the house come with the job? Does Brian get to move in?
No, no, Brian does not get to move in.
Oh, Brian would be happy to my.
No, but Mike, I really appreciated all your help and wisdom. The other thing that I raised my hand for is as soon as we. Dispense with this item, could we move up the chicken ordinance so people don't have to wait forever?
Oh, sure, sure. Sure, I would be happy to. By by the way, you probably most of you know that there will be a celebration. For Mike's uh experiment, so you probably know it or you will soon, so. Uh, okay, so. I I don't know, Larry, would it be this time to ask, uh, well, okay, need a motion to approve?
I move approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion approved by Elder West and uh seconded by Elder Fuzard. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, I wanted to thank everybody for the nice comments that they said about me.
Oh, there are more coming, Mike. Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just make a brief comment before you?
Oh, absolutely.
I I just wanted to introduce myself to to those uh council members that I didn't have the opportunity to meet uh over a couple of weeks.
Gentlemen, here's the Brian Gaddo.
Thank you. Uh, it's a pleasure to see all of you virtually. Um, as I've told uh many of the staff and and those that I've made contact with over the last couple of weeks. Uh, I'm very excited about uh the opportunity to come work uh in Middleton. Uh, I know I have very big shoes to fill in in replacing Mike, um, but you have an amazing staff and I'm really excited to. Get to work with all of them and get to work with all of you on all the important issues that are going on in Middleton, so. Excuse me, I'm um, just very excited to to get started on May 2nd and I'll uh. Make myself available here during transition to try to get up to speed with as many of you as possible in the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
And Brian, my shoes are only nine and a half, so.
Well, I'm eight and a half, so I, you know, I got, you got about an inch, I got some growth to go.
Well, thank you, thank you. You are both uh awesome, so. The motion is to approve the city administrator employment agreement. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Wow, motion passed unanimously, Brian, so you should be happy. Alright.
Congratulations, Brian.
We are going to move on to the. I don't bet, uh, hmm. Yes, let's say. Hmm. Okay, so we are on to the ordinances and this is the item number one. This is the first reading, final action may be taken upon approval of the motion. To suspend rules under section 1.07 of Middleton general ordinances. And the first one is the ordinance to permit the keeping of the chickens. If anybody wants to send.
I'll I'll make a, this is bizarre, I'll make a motion to deny said ordinance.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
This is Mark, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay. So. Okay, now.
Gurdip, Mayor, may I make a third motion?
Sure.
I would recommend that we deny the ordinance, but we refer. Uh, to the appropriate committee and I'm not quite sure which one it is and we might need to set up an ad hoc committee. To at least look into coming up with some of the zoning regulations. In terms of how close a chicken coop coop. Can be to a building on adjacent property.
Okay, need a second? Need a second?
Um, I I I can second it, but I need some clarification. I I, we can recommend, can we recommend it go to zoning? I mean, they are writing the zoning code right now.
Do we have?
You study the committee? Yeah, there's a zoning committee right now, so.
Well, this is Larry, um. A- as you know, um. Our office strongly recommends not putting it in the zoning ordinance. This is a police power regulation dealing with use of property. Um, we don't have nuisance ordinances at the start of zoning. This, and most importantly, uh. Um, if, for example, you want to do spacing of uh coops. In specific locations, putting in the zoning code means that you're grandfathering. All existing coops regardless of where they're located. So it's not, it's not. An a- an efficient way to incorporate those regulations. I mean, whether you adopt this ordinance or not, is it, is not what I'm talking about. That's your choice. But I I would strongly recommend that it not be. A zoning ordinance, regardless of what some of the commenters have said.
So Larry, I have a question. We could, uh, how would we go about? Having some sort of ordinance that would say you can't build a chicken coop. Within twenty-five feet of a neighboring residence. Where should that go?
Where would be?
That is in the ordinance.
But without all the other stuff that's in the ordinance.
If that's what you want to do, you could certainly do that, but I would recommend you not do that as a zoning ordinance. It it, because it doesn't, it only affects. We've heard from most of the chicken owners in Middleton tonight. I don't say that critically, I'm just observing. Um, that that um. It 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 simply is a police power issue, the same as uh dogs would be, just the same. As loud noises would be, um, it it, this is.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I, we have to go have some sort of ordinance if you want to build a accessory shed in your backyard. And that's what this is. Where does that go?
An accessory use, if this were truly an accessory use, would be a zoning issue. However, this deals with relationships between. Neighboring property owners and, you know, just as an example, you you could make the same argument. That signs, because they deal with the placement of a sign on a property could be handled as zoning. But most communities have made the decision that, and appropriately so, that this is a police power issue, not a zoning issue. Because of the specific problems that exist without having those regulations in place.
So Larry, we could make a a ad hoc committee to look into it, right?
Of course, of course, but I just want you to understand that, that. From 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 the viewpoint of your city attorneys, uh, neither of us think that. neither of us think that it's appropriately a zoning measure. It would accomplish nothing if it simply grandfathered every existing chicken coop regardless of where it's located right now, which is what it would do if it was a zoning ordinance.
So, Alder West, you want to make a motion that it should be sent to the ad hoc committee?
My motion was to establish an ad hoc committee to look at this issue.
Okay, alright. Okay, so, and Katie, that's, Alden Nelson, that's okay with you?
Sure. I, everybody wants a committee meeting.
Okay, so, okay, so I have, Kathy Olson has been waiting for a long time and then that will be followed by Mike Davis and then Alder Luke Puzard.
Um, yeah. I'm a little concerned, this ad hoc committee, is it to look at the chicken ordinances or is it to look at zoning?
Yeah, it will be looking at the chicken issues, so.
May I?
I, yeah.
Yeah. My feeling is we need an ordinance that says that chicken coops should be no closer than 25 feet to the adjacent dwelling on the adjacent property and that chickens should be in an enclosed area. Is what I'd like to see come out of this and hopefully that could protect the chicken owners, but also potentially, maybe, hopefully solve some of these issues. But it doesn't need to be the detailed ordinance that's in front of us.
Susan, this is kicking it down the road. I just wanna address a couple of things here. We have heard about dogs and how many complaints dogs have. We have approximately 5,000 dogs in Middleton and if we have 300 complaints, that's, that's an appropriate number. It's not an excessive amount. The, this is before us tonight because one chicken owner, I'm just, there's two, there's other issues, but there is a chicken owner that chose to build their coop within several feet of somebody's home, within several feet of their dining room, bedroom, air conditioning unit. And these, there's respiratory issues there and this was an intentional, done intentionally by the chicken owner. And they refused to move the coop. And this is not a little hen house. This is what the chicken owner has said. It's the chicken palace. And it's, when, when I think of people, people have a right to be able to enjoy their property. They can't even go out and enjoy their property because of the, the air and stuff. I mean, this is not, not an insignificant thing that's happening. And I cannot, they, they have been dealing with this since last summer. We let this go, we put the ordinance out there and we let the chicken mediators work on this for over three months and they were unable to, to resolve this problem. They, they say because it's a neighbor issue. You bet it's a neighbor issue. Somebody builds a chicken coop back close to my house, I have an issue with it. I grew up on a farm. I grew up with chickens. I know you, we always had the chicken coop way out back because chickens make noise, they smell. And I know that the, all the chicken owners on the call tonight, they, they, they think of these as their pets. I know they do, but these are livestock. They are, they produce eggs and meat. Yes, they have a pet component to it, but they're not like companion animals like dogs where you don't have to have a doghouse. These animals live outside. They don't live inside. And I think we have a lot of tolerant people living in Middleton and I, you know, they say, oh, nobody came forward to talk against it. Fine, a lot of people are happy to put up with, you know, maybe crows here and that. But when this is impacting people's lives, we need to do something about it. Um, I just, the, how they have just described sustainability in Middleton is sustainability is well-being for all now and in the future. And I don't think that this is well-being for all. The chicken owners, you know, they, they are very adamant about their chickens. They love their chickens, but they have to realize that they do impact other people. And this is a very common sense, it's, it's the most progressive ordinance I have ever, I have seen. And I've looked at everyone in Dean County. I've looked at many through Wisconsin, across the country. Most of them just say you can have four chickens, period, done. This one, it goes up to 10 chickens. This one lets them run, run free in the backyard. This one, what we're trying to get at is getting the coop away from the neighbors, the property, their, their homes. You have to have it 25 feet and that's what we need to have. We need to be able to do that. And kicking this down the road, it's not going to get us anywhere. I, I can see that there's maybe some, some lines, like we had some highlighted yellow in here that we could take that out, no problem. We could tweak, tweak a few words. I, I saw that the, the located 25 feet from adjacent properties, that, that would have to be edited and added. But I don't think we need to start all over and do this with an ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Olson, next one is in the order, Mike Davis and then Alder Luke Puzard.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I was just gonna ask Larry to clarify what police powers mean because a lot of folks might interpret that to mean that the police department gets involved with this. And I know, Larry, that's not what the, that wording means. And so I think it would be beneficial if you could explain that a little bit further.
Okay, the police power of a municipality permits the municipality to intervene for the common good in matters involving private property. And we all recognize private property rights are, are sacred. But people are not entitled to use their property in ways that negatively affect other people. And thus, the police power has existed for hundreds of years and, and it, it, it results in regulations, not zoning, that affect relationships that could, if uncontrolled, cause public detriment. And so, this, this is, this is the type of issue which, in my mind, fits perfectly into the police power. Whether you adopt it or not is your choice, but it is, it is a, a regulation that, you know, for example, if it was in zoning, would we, would we agree that if someone has a coop, that the right to a coop follows when they sell their house to someone else? And zoning creates its own set of issues. And, and zoning itself is a police power regulation. But, but the, the more typical aspects of it deal with the the relationship of the government to the people to prevent harm. Zoning, just for the sake of saying it, is, is in essence, a municipality makes rules that protects each property owner from their neighbor. Because the same rules will apply to you as would apply to your neighbor and that gives you comfort in the ability to live on your property appropriately. But that's just a special type of police power ordinance. This is a more typical one. And, and our code is full of ordinances that regulate specific situations in this manner.
Thank you, Larry. And then I, I wanted to also comment too that and this isn't a, a comment on the ordinance itself, the substance of it, but I will say that the nuisance ordinance, I heard many people saying, oh, we should go with the nuisance ordinance. Well, the nuisance ordinance, from my perspective, ultimately, working on enforcement of civic, civil code issues with our community services staff and, um, building inspection department is not the best means by which to deal with this. When we have neighbors who are unruly, the nuisance court, nuisance ordinance, does not really have the most effective rules in place. So, in effect, i- if you go with the nuisance ordinance on this kind of a matter, you're making my case for a new community services officer because we just don't have the staff. You know, Jim Shalander sent a, a letter out to all of you today about the 150 hours that they've spent on this one particular chicken nuisance issue. And I, it seems like there should be a bare minimum of rules to follow so that we don't have that kind of, uh, huge workload on our staff.
Thanks, thank you, Mike.
So, just, just as a consequence of that, one, one other thing, as a consequence of that, if the building inspection manager is supposed to be doing commercial design and review and the public health and safety issues of our building staff, maybe if he's spending his time that much time working on a nuisance issue between two property owners, that's not the way you want him spending his time.
Thank you, Mike. So, the next one is Alder Luke Puzard, followed by Alder Katie Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I, I, let me just say, but I do not envy the, you know, the position that Alder Olson is in. I've definitely been there and it's, it's really difficult when you've got to try and mediate a dispute amongst your constituents. I, I think, you know, I, I've seen a number of these proposed ordinances or other actions that have been taken by this council which often deal with disputes between maybe, let's say, two or a small group of nearby residents. And I, I, I don't know the full backstory here, but I can't help but lament over the fact that sometimes it seems like these disputes that are coming before the council could possibly have been resolved over a cup of coffee or a kitchen table, uh, in which all the appropriate parties were seated. I know that the last two years have been really hard and prevented much of that face-to-face contact that we normally enjoy. But I do wonder if it's sometimes it's simply too easy to send an email or, or call the police or post on Facebook than it is to take a step forward and have a difficult conversation, uh, face-to-face sometimes. And so, moving forward after tonight, I would encourage us as a council to think about potentially implementing a practice, whether written or otherwise, whereby if a, a similar proposal comes in front of us, that, that it must include some track record of attempted dispute resolution between the various parties before we even consider adopting an ordinance such as this, starting with the two individuals discussing and then maybe bringing in outside parties before it escalates to the level of, you know, a common council and an ordinance that affects everybody. So, thank you.
Alder Katie Nelson, Katie Olson.
I don't know if Mike is still on the call. Mike, are you there? You disappeared from my screen.
Mike Davis.
Oh, there you are. Um, he's not on the screen, but, um, I guess I wanted some clarification from his last comment and, um, maybe you guys can help me. But was Mike Davis saying, we have to be careful, we, we just can't spend the staff time? Was he saying that can't spend, like, the building inspector's time if we have an ordinance? Or he was saying, we can't spend the staff time if this is dealt with as just a nuisance problem?
Who, Bill, you could answer that? Well, Mike is back.
I was gonna try, but Mike is back.
Back. So, I think I got to just have Katie's question, which was, uh, whose time is being spent? And it is both the, the building inspection manager, uh, Jim Shalander and Dan Connor, who is community services.
Yeah.
So, it's both of their times being spent on.
If we, if we pass this ordinance, that's what you're saying? Or if we do not?
If you don't, pass an ordinance. I'm not advocating specifically for this ordinance, but for an ordinance with basic rules in place, it, it is hard to enforce things under the nuisance ordinance. It took us, as Jim estimated, 150 hours to get a citation to go to the municipal court for this one case. And that doesn't even count all the police hours. You count the police hours, it's probably 200 hours.
And you know, um, I've been on LNO with all these different meetings about this and I've never actually heard the specifics. All I hear is noise and odor. I've never heard the story of one house and the story of the other house. And I guess, I, I, I understand that Kathy is so frustrated because she spent a lot of time on this, trying to make this fair. I guess I don't understand it clearly enough. And so I would like to rescind my second on an ad hoc committee. And I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay. So, does anyone else has, so do you still support?
Raised.
Pardon me?
I have my hand raised.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Susan. But I was still trying to sort out that she rescinded her second for the ad hoc committee, but you still second her motion or not?
No. Katie didn't second my motion, so my motion is dead.
Oh, okay, alright. Okay, so, I guess you wanna, okay, go ahead.
Yes, may I speak?
Alder West and then Alder Kathy Olson and then Alder Dan Ramsey.
What I'm going to say is, the mo, the ordinance in the state that it is, is more detailed and somewhat punitive compared to what, after talking to chicken people, than what was initially agreed on. I can't support the current, what is before us in print tonight. I mean, there's things that need to be taken out and so on. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote against approving this. But I think we'd still need to come up with some sort of ordinance where it is and how we do it. It seems to be problematic in us figuring it out, but I think we need to work on that. But I can't support what's in front of us tonight.
Okay, thank you, Alder West. And I, I just, before I ask Alder Kathy Olson to speak, I just do want to let you know that I visited the both homes who have the chickens. One is on Allenwood and the other is on Hubbard. And the ones, though they're on Hubbard, I don't think there would be, I talked to them. They were moving their chicken coop. I don't think it would be a problem. They, at least when I visited just a couple of days ago, three days ago, they were very willing. And it is a very nice, clean chicken coop. And when I visited there, I didn't see any problems. I didn't see any issues. And I didn't give any warning or any of that. And then I got the address of the people living on the, the other people with chickens, which people had complaints about. And I went there, I talked to the family and have looked at that chicken coop as well. So, so I actually have visited the people, both of the homes. And so, the second family was already in the process of trying to handle the noise issues. So, so I think there are ways to handle it, but that's, you have to go and talk to the people. And I actually got a very good response from both of them. Alder Kathy Olson and then Alder Mark Sullivan. Uh, Elder Kathy Olson and then Elder Mark Sullivan.
Um, yeah, Susan. I know you talked to the chicken owners. The chicken owners don't want this at all, and I would, I just want to take a minute to go over. I submitted all the edits they proposed. And sent them over to, to, and you know, we always have subject to legal reviewer, um, acceptance. And not all of them were, were accepted. I mean, they were very, um, I think they wanted to have out of here, let me see. They did not like that the enforcement provisions of this section are not exclusive and. All ordinance have enforcement selections. They don't want, they didn't want anything in here about, um. That you, you could be held if you don't follow the rules, and that's just stuff that you, they're not, that stuff has to be in an ordinance. I, you know, it's just common sense. Other things were like, um, they wanted to, um. Define, tweak how the coop was defined or add a chicken or a hen or no, an adult. Hen, it's, you know, a lot of small details. And not everything was allowed, and I mean, the water was back in here. I'm very fine with taking the water and the waste out of here. I just wanna, wanna say too, um, we heard a lot about, um. How this is so much overreaching than what a dog ordinance is. Dog ordinance is handled at the state level and it's fourteen pages. I don't think this is, you know. Yes, we could probably get rid of some of the things in here. But I, you know, we do have to have some of the enforcement clauses. Susan, if you, you know, you.
That's not the part of arguing about Kathy.
Okay, just one, one question. Okay, Kathy, are you done?
I just wanna say. We have to be careful because, you know, it's, it's. They're never, they're never going to want an ordinance. They're, they're used to that. There's no limits on how many chickens. There's no. Nothing saying how far they have to be. It's, it's easier for them not to have one and that's. I, it's, it's just time that the city joins, joins the, you know, if, if you have a neighbor that. Wants to put their coop up next to somebody's house, that, that's just not, not okay in my book.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Susan, Elder West, you had something to say?
Oh, I don't wanna continue just arguing about it because it needs, what I want to say though, we do need to go. What is in front of us tonight needs work. And for that reason, and there's multiple little places. And for that reason, I can't vote for it. Because I don't think we should penalize all of our chicken owners. Just like we shouldn't penalize other people. Who own dogs or cats or. Some of the things that were in the exotic animal ordinance.
Are you done, Elder West?
Yes.
Okay, Elder Sullivan.
You know, I wasn't that involved in other discussions at LNO. I will tell you that I did receive a call from. One of our residents today. And I think. We need to understand that. The ordinance before us is a reasonable start. We do not live in a rural. I say that. Carefully, we do not live in a rural city. It's a suburban city. We are trying to become more dense. In terms of, uh, housing. And that requires responsibilities for neighbors. And we regulate how we have dogs. Chickens are no different. For, from a enforcement perspective, right? There's reasonable rules that need to be put up. So that we can all have quiet enjoyment of our residences. Lot line setbacks, the existing zoning, they should exist here as well. I think that what we have in front of us is reasonable. It, from my reading of it, it does not impact. The, the size of flocks. Immediately, it does through, does so through attrition. But the, the biggest issue here is citing of the coops. And again, I, from what I can see here, it is a reasonable start. That the city needs to have in place. So that it can, uh, uh, you know, try and adjudicate these to any disputes that arise in the future.
Are you done?
Yes.
Elder West, you have some additional points or?
Is this, I'm looking at what's in our packet right now. Is this the same one that was present on Friday?
Yes, it is the same, yes.
I would like Mike to answer that because that one. As I remember, had definitions of how many chickens and what a hen was, what a. Chick was, what a rooster was, and that's out of.
There's still ads, so.
It does? It, no, it doesn't.
Okay, so is it the same?
There was an earlier draft that reflected those things, but that was. You know, I didn't draft this, but I did talk with Matt Fleming who did. And that was removed prior to this draft being completed, simply because.
Draft come and get into the packets?
This ordinance is the final version.
But it wasn't in the pa- our council packet on Friday. Or Saturday, because I read it then and it was different.
Did you get a copy from somebody else?
To my understanding.
I went to City of Middleton and government and so, and that's where I read it.
Well, I, I got my council packet. The same day as everyone else did from the city and. This draft of the ordinance in it and no other.
Then maybe I saw the other one, but. We need to take out the waste and water, especially the water freeze needs to go out and how frequently it need, the waste needs to be disposed of.
Okay. Any other points, Elder West? Okay, so Elder Nelson, this is, uh, the same. Version which was, uh, presented to the Ellen committee, Elder Nelson.
Um, I have a question about the. Two chicken coops that are kind of causing this. Can you tell me how far each of the coops is from the neighboring? Uh, dwellings?
So, uh, one is about forty or fifty feet away. I, I didn't exactly measure it, maybe at least more than thirty-five feet away. And the other was, uh, maybe, um. I didn't again measure it, but maybe could be ten.
And so. With the one that is over twenty-five feet from any other dwelling. Does it even? Help with what we're doing?
Not really.
No, it wouldn't, no.
Well, it would do it i- in terms of the, the size of the flock. And the issues about maintaining a cleanly coop.
Well, um, can somebody, how many chickens does the coop have that's the forty feet away from the dwelling?
I think in that case, if I have the right one, that was, uh, a Mr., uh. Wet, that witty who was commenting earlier.
Yeah.
That's facing, it's, and it's on the, uh, edge of the property line. As I understand it, and it's facing the, not their own home, but the neighbor's home. So some simple rules by having your coop facing your own home. And having it twenty-five feet from the property line would be a good thing and, and both of these problems would, would. Maybe not go away completely, but much of those would be mitigated.
Mike, not property line adjacent, adjacent home.
I know, but, uh, the, the issue for the Witties, I thought was that it was right at the property line and facing. The neighbors.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah.
Oh, well. Okay, okay, I'm the one who actually had seen both of them, okay? So I didn't go with the, as with the, something to measure it. Neither of them is on a property line. Let's just, uh, be straightforward. I have actually been to both of them. And, uh, so the one which is on the Allenwood Avenue, it is open from, uh, all, both sides. It, it's slightly closed from the other side, but, and they both were clean, at least when I was there. So let's not, uh, make up, uh, I, I, I was there only once. So I haven't wasted them more than once, but I, neither of them had any problem, so. And this was, I take it that this was a cold, you know, this is in winter, but, uh. One was, uh, right after talking to you, Kathy, that was on Friday or, that, that was a Saturday. And the other one was, uh, eh, before LNO meeting, so.
And you examined the inside the coop and everything?
Yeah, I, yeah, and one of them actually was inside the coop and the other from the outside, yes.
One you did not, okay, just to be clear.
One I looked from, I mean, I, it, you can see, it wasn't that big.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can somebody tell me what the minimum? Setback is if I wanna put a shed on my property? So it has to be ten foot from, ten feet from the property line?
Two feet.
Two feet?
And the same with the chicken coops.
Yeah.
And, and by the way, the one on Herbert Avenue, they actually had the building permit from our building inspector. So it was, uh, it was approved by the city. Okay.
We've made other mistakes before, your name.
Yes, we have.
Okay, I'm just saying that, that they had approval from the city, so. Okay, Elder, um, Elder Ramsey and then Elder West. If you have some regional points, Elder West, Elder Ramsey.
Yes, I do.
Okay, Elder Ramsey and then Elder West.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that one of the things that, um, Mark made a very, very good point in that. As the city wants to continue to get more dense. And as we include in our new zoning, more dense zoning. And as chicken keeping becomes more popular. And we know that it's, um, it's, it's started to kind of urban chicken has have kind of taken off in the last few years. As a matter of fact, I was, uh, in Walmart buying some, uh, office supplies, which are right next to the magazines. And on the magazine rack were two different magazines all about. Urban, uh, backyard chickens, so we know it's becoming more of a, a common thing to do. So by having an ordinance, uh, of, uh, with some minimum standards. What we end up doing is we end up. Eliminating problems for later. So are, are we gonna cure all the problems we have? No, not necessarily, but what we do is we put in a plan in place moving forward. So that as we do get more dense, as they do become more, more chicken owners, that there's some standards to be met. Now, nobody wants to punish the, the folks that have had their chickens for a number of years. And who have not fall, fallen under any kind of regulations. We're not, it, it was never the intention. Of LNO to try to be punitive. Uh, wh- what everyone was trying to do was come up with an ordinance that made sense moving forward. And protected the rights of the, uh, current chicken holders. To that, we had several discussions and, uh, I, I'm not sure that this is the final draft of the ordinance that we came up with. But it was. There were discussions about the number of chickens, so we discussed, um. Actually increasing the number of chickens from four to six, and there were other, a, a few other things, um, that we had discussed. So some of the things in this ordinance, as we have it in our packet, I think needs to be tweaked. I, I, I don't know that we can vote on this because I'm not sure that this is. What everybody understood the final version to be. But having said that, moving forward with, with a plan and to have an ordinance that, uh, is on the books. So that there's a protection for not only folks that don't want a chicken coop right next to their bedroom window. But also for the chicken owners that is somebody who just. Decides that they wanna be difficult and willy-nilly complain. That the, our, our inspector can go out and say, well, you know what? They, they've done everything according to the rules. The, the coop is faced towards their house. It's away from your building by X amount. There is no waste. Everything is fine. It also gives a level of protection for the chicken owners. So I, I think it's necessary. But I don't know that this is necessarily the final copy of what we wanted to vote on.
Thank you, Elder Ramsey. Um, I'm going to ask Elder Emily Kuhn and then Elder West, because Emily Kuhn has not spoken. Elder West, Emily, Elder Emily Kuhn.
Uh, thanks. I, I just wanna say that, uh, what Susan was saying, that this isn't the. Ordinance that she remembers. I, I feel the same way. I looked Friday. Maybe I was just recalling the one before that, but I don't remember this one. Cause I was reading it Saturday morning again, but the, the one thing I wanna point out is it says for parcels, a quarter of an acre in size or less. Up to four hens may be kept. You know, I, I'm concerned about this ordinance because my district. The, 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 there's a lot of odd-sized backyards. There's not a lot of places you can have chickens. Um, I remember one of the earlier ordinances, it was like twenty-five feet. Like no coop could be within twenty-five feet of, of, of a lot line. Well. My yard is forty feet wide, so if I wanted chickens, no way in heck could I have chickens. Um, and, and I feel like sometimes when we make ordinances, we're thinking about newer Middleton. I know Mark just talked about infill. Infill is coming, so newer Middleton might be more like my district. But I say that because, um, you know, I want us to think about all of Middleton. And, uh, where we can support things like this. I think that. You know, having a chicken is actually cool. I think that, um. I, by the way, I don't have a chicken, not gonna get a chicken, uh, don't really have a space for chicken. Also, I have a sandbox. Dog, kids, too busy, but the ones, the people that can have a chicken and do it right, I thank them. And I thank them for coming tonight because they, they're talking about sustainability. They're talking about meeting their neighbors, sharing the eggs, sharing the experiences with their children. Talking it out with their neighbors. Um, I wanna say thank you to them. It's really exciting what they're doing. And, um, basically I, I'm pro chicken.
Thank you. So Elder Susan West and then Elder Kathy Olson.
Okay, I'm reading it. There's, in the current version that's in front of us, there is a huge mistake. On the definition of front yard. Because it says a line extended from the rear of the building to the side lot line. So that includes also a side yard, and then you go down and look at side yard. And it's the area between lines extended from the front and rear of the principal structure. So it's. That doesn't make sense. It doesn't. You know, it's just not logical. If we pass this tonight, we need to immediately start working on. Getting this ordinance cleaned up so it doesn't have all these problems, because we do need to have, I think people do need to be able to have chickens. They're not. Dangerous like dogs are more dangerous, cats are more dangerous. Yes, there is a very sad situation where there is one chicken owner that lives next to someone with health issues. And I don't think passing this ordinance is gonna solve that problem. But there's a lot of benefit for a lot of people to have chickens. So we need to work on this more.
Are you done, Elder West?
Yeah.
Okay, Elder Kathy Olson.
Yeah, um, I don't consider myself, I consider myself pro chicken too. I don't have a problem with it, but I just think that it needs a few more guardrails. Like we need to limit the number of chickens you can have and, and decide. I do have a question for Larry. When this came over from LNO, we had already made a couple of comments that we were thinking that would be struck and they were highlighted in, in yellow. How, what would be the process? Can we, can we vote on this or do we have to make sure it's a clean copy before we start voting on it?
Well, this is the first time, so unless you vote to waive. The second reading, which seems unlikely, there's nothing final in what you're looking at right now.
Okay.
So to make changes, uh, clearly make them.
Do we sit here right now and make that what we'd like to see edited? Is that what we do? Do we sit here right now and make that what we'd like to see edited, is that what we do? Or do we say?
It's up to you, I mean, you could do it at an L and O meeting too, but if people wanna do it now, they could.
Well, I don't know how you will make changes here, I think uh. Um, if it could be sent it back there, but uh I don't think I want to ma- making changes here at the city council meeting, so. Uh, any other questions or comments?
I am not, I'd just like to finish, um.
Okay.
I. If we wanted to make changes, it would have to be at an L and O meeting or it would have, it would have to be um. Is that right?
No.
Okay.
It might be more convenient, but believe me, the common council always has the ability to. Amend an ordinance even if it is allegedly in final form. We can, we can provide a clean ordinance the next day incorporating the changes the council made. So, you know, I I I want, I wanna make that clear that that the council always retains. Jurisdiction to do things other than vote an ordinance up or down. You could vote to remand it back to L and O, that that, there's there's a lot of things the council might do.
Okay.
Amendments.
Well, well, I I don't know if this. I I I see some edits that could be made in here very easily, and one of them was the number of chickens and the highlighted parts that we were um. That we had marked from L and O. And the other was um, we wanna make sure that it's very clear that this is twenty five feet from adjacent. Pro- properties on adjacent lots, not, or, you know, not uh, not everyone's twenty five feet from every house. Um. And I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm I'm not sure what, how we would go about getting some of these edits in here.
Okay, so Larry, what is the best way to handle it? I mean, we can just, you know, it's uh. There are some other items on the city council agenda too, this is not only, and we got.
Yes, of course.
I'll make a motion to refer back to L and O for edits.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I do want to let you know that uh I have spent more time on this chicken ordinance thing than. Than any other, well, than I had wanted to. I have looked at what, how Madison is handling it, how Pittsburgh is handling it, how San Perry is handling it. How Warner is handling it, how Ashkash is handling it, and even how uh Sacramento is handling it. A- a- and you know, whatever you have here, we can do better. A- a- and I think when it goes back to L and O, let's do better. And uh, the motion is to send to L and O, although in favor of the motion say aye.
I have a, I have a question, what do you want L and O to do?
Well.
All of their problems.
Well, alrighty then.
Get all the, this is what I would like, get all the input and uh. Maybe L and O has the authority to meet with those uh chicken folks and non-chicken folks. If you want me to get involved, I can help you.
I think that's the issue all along, is that they tried to mediate between these two groups. So you're gonna have to give L and O specific instructions on what you want them to change.
And and I think we've already gotten that. And I I'm saying that I I think we can make some edits here for that. Gurdip, you just sent over an edited copy that says basically chickens can run at large, we don't want them fenced in.
Uh, I I, we can sit down and talk, so most.
No, I, you know, I just, I just don't, I just, you know, this can go to. I, this could go back to L and O, but I just think this is a conversation that we're gonna have to have at council, I just do, and I'm sorry this is going so long. But um.
Do you want to put it at the next meeting just for discussion again? I mean, you can send it to L and O and have a discussion at next meeting as well.
Can, can edits be made for the next meeting? Larry, can that, is that possible without going to L and O?
Yes.
Of course.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I would prefer, that we. Grab some of the edits here and um bring it back the next time.
Well, the motion is to send to L and O, are you making a different motion then?
Yes.
You know, before we go further than this, it's it's already nine forty, there is a packed agenda. It, I think it's, it's, you know, we'll be here through one or two o'clock if we if we continue this nonsense. Either vote to to move it to to L and O and have council members. Email your suggestions or show up at a at a, attend an L and O meeting so that you can mark this thing up. Right, but at this point, we've beat this to death, so either vote on the ordinance or send it to L and O.
Okay, I I.
Mark, Mark, can we please just bring it back to the the next meeting, please? Please.
I agree with elder Sullivan now, if there's a. Any other quick comments, otherwise, all those in favor of the motion to send to L and O say aye. Okay, so no one wants to send it to L and O? So the motion.
Can I make the motion that we make edits and bring it back to the next council meeting, please?
Are we gonna vote on the, on every edit?
No.
Who's gonna make the edits?
Yeah, that's where I would, the ad hoc committee to do it.
You guys are, you're killing yourselves here.
Okay.
Okay, I would say Kathy, I can work with you, let's send it to L and O and make the edits and bring it back. Okay, so the, I'm gonna still ask to, let's vote on the motion by elder Sullivan.
You already voted that down, Gurdip.
Okay, but I didn't ask all those who are against and I I didn't, okay. All those in favor of the motion to send it to L and O say aye. Those who are opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, alright, so the motion fails, okay, is there any other motion now?
I would like to make a motion that the edits be, anybody wants to make edits to it and we'll have. Would Matt be, look, Matt would incorporate them and bring back a clean copy for the next uh council meeting.
Kathy, I have one question, if we have conflicting edits, how do we resolve that?
Matt will have.
Hopefully we won't, but.
You're gonna have to vote on every single edit, and that's the point, is that you're, this is a waste of time for council. It's now we've spent another ten minutes on this issue. You know what?
You're gonna miss us when you're gone, when you're gone.
I I'm not, this is one of the reasons.
Is somebody willing to make a motion to defer it and then uh l- let Matt and Kathy or whoever wants to work on it and bring it back?
Well, we could, Susan, do you wanna work on it and?
I am more than willing to work on it.
Gurdip, do you wanna work on it?
Well, I have told you, y- yes, I would, I would help, but I'm not. Yes.
Okay. I'll make, make that motion that.
So we do, are you making a motion Kathy, that we defer to the next council meeting then?
And and Gurdip, Susan, myself, anyone else wanna work on it?
I will.
Who's, who's that?
Guys, gotta be careful here, you're not a, not a.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Maybe I don't get to, okay, I'm out.
Well, Su- Susan, Kathy and the mayor and anyone else that has.
Edits can send them to.
Can send.
Okay, you are all welcome to send me your input. Everybody.
There's no walking, if people just send what they want changed.
Okay, yes. Although in favor of the motion to defer and uh then um. Send the comments to to the mayor or Kathy, what they would like to.
To all of us.
Oh, hello, okay, send to all of, all all, any of the elders, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
There was no second to that motion.
Was there any second, is there any?
Ramsey will second.
Okay, second by Ramsey, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, five thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you let me know who said no, please?
Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Elder Kuhn.
I think Fazard was a.
Yeah, Fazard, yeah, sorry, Fazard, yep.
Fuzard and Sullivan and who else?
Kuhn.
Kuhn. Okay, and Emily Kuhn, five thirty, so, okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Lori, alright, we are back to. Item number two under agreements EMS agency medical direction agreement with UW hospital and clinics.
Mayor, may I, may I suggest that we take two, three and four together, they are the same.
Yes, absolutely, you want to?
I'll make a motion that we, the council approve all three agreements, that's recommended by finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to prove two, three and four together say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, item number five. Agreement with the Hamel, Green and Abrahamson Incorporated. Call a G F R a business park micro grid and community resilient center study.
This is Mark, I'll move approval is recommended by finance.
Ramsey will second.
Second, motion by elder Sullivan, second by elder Ramsey, any questions or comments?
May I suggest that it be effective upon adoption of resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, since we won't have money for the contract unless that's approved.
Okay, is that okay with you, elder Sullivan?
It's certainly.
Okay, anyway, that's what it is, so.
So, so mayor. Why don't we play, do it smart and go right to resolution four, uh resolution three and four. I'll make a motion that we approve both resolutions as approved by finance.
Okay, let's go to the resolutions thirty and four, okay. Okay, resolution thirty, re- resolution twenty-two dash seventeen, this is the budget amendment on micro grid feasibility. And community resilience study and item number four is. Resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, this is the budget amendment for the battery storage project. So these are the two, so elder Sullivan, you mo- you have motion to prove?
I did.
Okay, and elder Ramsey, you're seconded, right?
I did.
Okay, any questions or comments, this is, we are voting on resolution. Um, twenty-two dash seventeen and twenty-two dash eighteen, that's the item three and four under resolutions. All those in favor of the motion to prove these two together say aye.
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 Now we can vote on three, on contract or agreements, three, four and five. Or the other way around, whatever.
We just already voted two, three and four, just the agreement five.
Five.
Okay, so we already had a motion and seconded on that number five, that's the agreement with Hamel. Green and Abrahamson for a business park, micro grid and community resilient center study. Any questions or comments? This was the, the motion was by elder Sullivan, second by elder Ramsey, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes, we are on to item number six. Under the agreement, this is the amendment number two. To agreement for designing services with strand associates for pleasant view road reconstruction.
This is Mark, I'll move approval is recommended by finance, which was to, for the five thousand, but not the. Redesign of the bridge.
Okay.
I'll second that, this is Susan.
Okay, motion by elder Sullivan, second by elder Rest. Sean, I would ask you just one quick question, so. There is a.
Quick question, please.
Yeah, it will be short, there will be no question of the durability of either of the bridges. By having the design or any of those things, that's true, right?
Yeah, well, this, the bridge as designed would be more typical of this style of fabrication. But they both would have been designed to be reliable, yes.
Equally durable, right? Okay, alright, you agree, right?
I agree.
Okay, all those in favor, any other questions or comments, this is item number six, agreement, amendment number two. To agreement for designing engineering services for strand associates for pleasant view road. Reconstruction, this is five thousand dollars, it's approved, approved as approved by the finance committee, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We are on to award of big court and professional services. Uh, item number one, award of proposal to peak system group for supply of new audio system for outdoor pool.
This is Mark, I'll move approval is recommended by finance.
This is Alder Burke, I'll second.
Okay, motion by elder Sullivan, second by elder Burke. Uh, Matt or whoever is there, so why we already have it and the what, what the audio system which we have doesn't work? Or is it too old or what?
My god. Can we just vote on this, then we've already discussed this ad nauseam.
The current system does not reach all areas of the pool, doesn't cover all, both of the restrooms. And we are unable to reach announcements to all areas of the outdoor pool, the new system will address all of that. And.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, okay, this is the motion is to prove the word of proposal to peak system. System grow for supply of new audio system for outdoor pool, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, we are on to miscellaneous. This is uh wave ordinance nineteen point oh seven bracket four for road design. Bell Fontaine Boulevard.
This is Susan, I move that we waive the ordinance for road design of Bell Fontaine Boulevard. And use uh, I think it's alternate feed, it has a combination of four hundred and fifty feet and three hundred feet radius.
This is Alder Burke, I'll second the motion.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to waive ordinance nineteen point oh seven bracket four for road design of Bell Fontaine Boulevard say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We are on to ordinances, you guys want to skip number one? I'm sure you do, let's go to number.
Too soon, Gurdip, too soon.
Let's go to item number two. Uh, an ordinance to rezone property from R to to planned dual fantastic. P D D general implementation plan to allow for construction of four buildings. Duplexes and laundry efficiency at seven one zero seven to seven one zero nine United Avenue. And uh the builder was here, he would like if we could waive the section one oh seven. Need emotion to prove.
Ramsey, I moved to suspend the rules and approve with the contingencies listed.
Okay, need a second? Okay, motion by elder Ramsey and second by Katie Nelson. Any questions or comments, all those in favor of the motion to prove. An ordinance rezone property from R to. To plan development as a P D D general implementation plan to allow for construction of four buildings. Duplex and laundry and efficiency at seven one zero seven to seven one zero nine United Avenue, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes, everyone, we are on to item number three. An ordinance to amend the general implementation plan for the conservancy band. Residences to law for rental occupancy town home owners. Two four one one, two four one three, two four one five, two four one seven and two four one nine on farm eight. Do you want to, somebody want to make a motion or defer or do anything with this?
This is Alder Burke, I'll make a motion to deny. Uh, the amendment.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second that, this is Luke.
Okay, motion by elder Burke, second by elder Luke Fuzard. Any questions or comments at this time? Okay, um Larry, could I ask, uh, this is, this is the council, so there's a Taylor Frankel, he wants to talk, would I allow him or not?
Well, of course, we typically only have comments during the public comment. But with your, if you wish to approve it and the council is comfortable, then uh you can do that. But with your, if you wish to approve it and the council is comfortable, then, uh, you can do that.
Okay. Um. Okay, well, this is very, this is situation, Taylor, keep it very brief, please.
I will keep it brief, um, appreciate your time on this, um, I would just ask if. The motion. For those that are seeking to deny this, if you could give direction on where to go, because Plan Commission did support this. We're just looking for the ability to rent the first five units, the first five townhouses. The TIP agreement doesn't mention. Owner occupied versus rental, this isn't a zoning issue, Matt Fleming and I have talked about this ad nauseam. Uh, this is mainly just whether we can rent. The first five units because we've been marketing them for sale for two years. Indulgently trying to get these sold, but they're not selling. And, and we can't, you know, our bank is requiring us to do something with them, so. You know, we would ask, there is no other townhome product on the market right now. So just the flexibility, we can sell them in the future, but just to rent them for now. Um, I think a good strategy would be for us to rent to own, um, just to get people in them. Um, and again, you know, the council's done this in the past where it's changed from owner occupied condos to, to rentals, so. This isn't that far off.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Not.
So, okay, uh, now the question or comment only from the council, okay? Anybody wants to speak, please raise your hand. Anyone who wants to speak? Anyone who wants to speak, okay, so. I don't see any raised hands, so the motion is to. Anybody wants to speak, otherwise motion is to. Uh, deny the. An ordinance to mend the general implementation plan for conservancy band residences to allow for rent occupancy. Of town home units twenty-four eleven to twenty-four nineteen on Farming Street. Although in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes seven one. Okay, we are on to planning and zoning, item number one. This is the specific implementation plan to allow for construction of four buildings duplex and laundry efficiency. At seven one zero seven to seven one zero nine University Avenue, need a motion to prove.
Ramsey, I move approval.
I'll second.
With the contingencies.
With all the contingencies, yes.
With all the contingencies.
Motion by Elder Ramsey, second by Elder Nelson. Uh, to prove with all the contingencies, any questions or comments? Any questions or comments, please raise your hands. Any questions are, okay, although in favor of the motion. This is the item number one, our planning and zoning. This is the specific implementation plan to allow for construction of four buildings. Duplexes and laundry and efficiency. Have seven one zero seven to seven one zero University Avenue LLC, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven one. Okay, we are on to item number two under the planning and zoning. And this is the specific implementation plan. For Bruce Company Office Garden Center and Greenhouse. Two eight three zero Farming Street, and then there are lots of contingencies here.
This is.
Ramsey, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, this is Alder Burke, I'd make a motion to approve the S I P with the contingencies attached.
Need a second?
Ramsey, a second.
Okay, motion by Elder Burke and second by Elder Ramsey. Any questions or comments, please raise your hands, any questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any raised hands, the motion is to prove the specific implementation plan. For Bruce Company Office Garden Center and Greenhouses. For two eight three zero Farming Street with all the contingencies listed here, and this is their page one A. Also in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. We are on to the resolution and the resolution number one is, uh. Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash fifteen, this is the Diamond Prairie, this is the Saco, Seco. Diamond Prairie two Tiff Bond, so need a motion to prove.
This is Mark, I'll move approval is recommended by finance.
Need a second.
Alder Burks.
Go ahead, Robert.
Luke.
Okay, second by, well, the motion by Elder Sullivan, second by Elder Burke. They already spent the money, we are simply giving this Tiff Bond now. Although, any questions or comments? Any questions, although in favor of the resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. Diamond Prairie two Tiff Bond, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we. Are on to resolution number two. Well, I, resolution number two, but this is a resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. Determining the necessity of taking for the property owned by Bruce and Mary Heisey. Tax parcel number zero eight zero eight three fifty-four, eight five six zero dash eight.
This is Susan, I move approval.
Need a second.
Alder Burke, seconds.
Okay, motion by Elder West, second by Elder Burke. Does anybody want to say anything or you are ready to, does anybody raise your hands if you have anything to add or delete? Okay, you know what you're voting on, this is the resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash sixteen determining necessity of taking. For the property owned by Bruce and Mary Heisey. And tax parcel number zero eight zero eight three five four dash eight five six zero dash eight. This is to have a park land there, although in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we already passed resolution number three, item number three and, uh. Item number four. We are on to item number five. Which is the resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash oh six, this is about Milton Beach Road. Reconstruction, final assessments, Emily, do we want to prove or do we want to wait?
Approve, move it.
Is that your motion?
I make a motion, I apologize, it's getting late.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Elder Emily Coon and second by Elder West. Any questions or comments?
Just excited to get started, thanks everyone for all that you do.
Okay, all right. If there are no questions or comments, although in favor of to prove the resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six. This is about Milton Beach Road Construction, these are the final assessments and, uh, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Emily, that passes unanimously, how about that? Need a motion to go into closed session?
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by, um, Elder Ramsey, second by Elder Emily Coon.
Before we do that, could I ask you a question?
Yep.
Uh, we have one other open session item on the agenda.
Which one?
Larry, could we go into closed session to discuss that item and then come back out into open session? After that item, or do we need to stay in closed session for all four items? You need to stay in closed session for all four items, I'm sorry to say. Okay, it's just, it works, uh, if the, if the agenda had said that, it would be fine, but since it doesn't. We've got to do it the way the agenda says.
Okay. Although in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, Mike. Let's make sure that we have the. All the relevant people in closed sessions.
And maybe Mike was asking for this reason, but does Jeremy need to then stay around?
That's exactly why I was asking.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, Jeremy, can you, hopefully you can stick around and come back in, we're, we're sorry. Oh.
He's out of his sleep.
Thank, thank you and sorry.
We're back in the Zoom. Okay, all right, we are in the open session, I did a motion to prove the settlement agreement and release of claims. For lit- litigation for Jill and David Orazio.
This is, this is Alder Burke, I'd make the motion for, uh, approving that settlement agreement and release.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, second by, um, Elder Kathy Olson. And, okay, any questions or comments? Although in favor of the motion to prove the settlement agreement. Although in favor of the motion to prove the settlement agreement and release of claims for litigation from Jill and David O- Orazio, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, they need a motion to adjourn.
I moved Alder Burke.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ella Burke, second by Ella. Katie Nelson, although in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Well, good night and thank you everyone. This is probably the longest meeting we have ever had, right?
It's getting close.
Good night everyone, thank you.
Night.